Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. We will start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance from Commissioner Lawhan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everyone enjoyed the Fourth of July. And just about a month ago, we celebrated, I believe, the 75th anniversary of D-Day. And back in May, toward the end of May, we celebrated Memorial Day, which represented all the soldiers and service people that have fallen and given it all for our freedom. And we celebrated on July 4th our freedom and the freedom that we have in the United States. I don't know of another country I'd rather live in. Even when we disagree with each other, we still have the freedom to be able to disagree, and we still have the freedom to live a free life. And I'm thankful for that, and I hope you are as a citizen of the United States. If you would, please join me in prayer. Father, we do thank you for the freedoms that we do have. We thank you for the life that you have given us here on earth. We know that even though it may be long, it can be very short. We thank you for the opportunities it brings. We just pray that as commissioners or as citizens that we would do things that are pleasing in your sight and not in our sight. Just guide and direct us as we make decisions tonight, and just give us the ability to make the right decisions. These things I pray in Christ's name, amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us witness the delight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawhan. Are there any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we add Consent Item E to Number 11.
Okay, a motion to add a budget amendment, Consent Item 11E, and a second by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any discussion on that? It's on your table, 11E. The Sheriff's Office. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number one on the agenda this evening is the 2020 Water Main Extension Program. Presenter, Mr. Wingo.
Thank you. I assume I've been here before. The fiscal 2020 Water Main Extension Program was budgeted for $240,000 for water main extensions. There were six applications submitted the previous year for the community-based extension program. All of the applications that were submitted exceeded the $500,000 threshold that was part of the program. Four of those six applications have been included in the Phase IV Water Main Extension Preliminary Engineering Report that will be submitted to USDA for grant-applicable funding and financing in the fiscal fall of 2020, which is actually the fall of 2019. I apologize if that was unclear, but it will be this fall when the PER report will be submitted. These extensions will be under the Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority domain. I would state also that there are no guarantees that all of these water mains will get approved by the USDA as part of the package, but we're going to put our best foot forward to try to get them all in there. The two remaining applications that were not included in the Phase IV project, well, the reason they weren't included was because their location was not in relative proximity to the other water main extensions that were included in the Phase IV, and those were Coley Store Road and Webb Road. In reviewing those two applications, it is apparent that Coley Store Road, being on the western side of the county, is more, I guess, apt to be developed, first of all. Plus, it could also be included in an SDF study whereby we can use it as a future capital project to be done. So it has a lot more, I guess, opportunities for that water main extension to take place. With that said, the remaining project, Webb Road, is not, doesn't have the same opportunity for a water main extension, and also it's located in an area that's far away from the other USDA projects, which means that it's, I guess, the one that I would recommend based on that criteria. So what I'm saying is that we, you know, my recommendation is let's go with the Webb Road for the water main extension, keeping in mind that we have $240,000 in the operating budget. Will be under design. We can start construction after the first of the year. And what I'd like to do is use the, hopefully, the next year's budget of $240,000 in operating to apply to the contract so that we don't have to take out a large financing package to complete the job. So staff would recommend to the Stanley County Board of Commissioners that we approve the Webb Road Community-Based Water Main Extension application for design and funding.
Thank you, Duane. Commissioners, have any questions?
We agree your proposal because it's over $240,000. It's probably a person who's bigger than you. $240,000.
Yeah, we had agreed, I believe, to go with the $240,000 as an operating budget and do as much as we can with the $240,000 in order to avoid debt service because it'll just keep piling on top of one another if we try to do these large projects every year. So that said, I'd like to spend the $240,000 on Webb Road and then for next operating budget, assuming we, and hopefully we'll have more than $240,000. We may be able to complete the whole thing without doing any, you know, taking money out of retained earnings just to get it completed and be done.
Thank you. Any other questions? What do we want to do with this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we go with Mr. Wingo's recommendation to start Webb Road and hopefully complete it next year.
Motion by Commissioner Lawhan to accept the staff recommendation. Second by Commissioner Almond. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
I would just make a note to the board that, you know, that there is funding for that operating budget this year. I think when we, we may want to consider, the board may want to consider either retained earnings to match with that this year, or taking some money from the operating general fund from reserves there just to finish out the project and get it all done for the estimated $623,000 it would cost. So that's something we'll likely bring back to you in August 12th Board meeting for a budget amendment so we can get that project completed and give you some alternatives. Well, $240,000 is already there. I would, I would say that we need to look closely at closing that gap of the additional $400,000, whether that's with some portion of retained earnings and another portion of general fund operating money, given that there's a public health concern with the wells in this area. I think it would be more than appropriate to take some of the general fund reserves to finish this project. You know, if it was, if you're looking at $2 million, I'm maybe looking at it differently, but I think in this case, when you've got such a small amount, I think we need to bring it back to you and have you closely look at going at and getting it all done this fiscal year as one project.
Thank you, County Manager. Item number two tonight is the Library Board of Trustees' appointments. Ms. Hollis.
Good evening. I'm here to present to you the recommendations of the Library Board of Trustees to fill the two board vacancies that we have. We had two terms that ended on June 30th. The first was Glenda Gibson. She was completing an unfilled term, and Stephanie Almond completed her first term. Both Glenda and Stephanie have started working out of the county and were unable to accept another term because their work schedules didn't allow for them to attend the meetings. So at our last board meeting, the trustees looked over all of the applicants that Tyler had sent to us. We've got a list of five criteria that the board members took into consideration before making their recommendations, but it came down to, they recommend Dana Glenn, who is a library user, she's active in the Friends of the Library, and she does have teaching experience, which will help on our board as we look at directions we want to take. They also, board is also recommending Kimberly Marshall. She is a huge library user and has brought her children and now is currently bringing her grandchildren to take advantage of our library programming. So we would just like the commissioners to approve those or make their own designations.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Dana Glenn and Kim Marshall.
Dana Glenn and a nomination for Kim Marshall?
Those are the two the Library Board is missing.
All right. Any other nominations? All right. I'll close the nominations. Is there a motion to accept those by acclamation? Motion to accept by acclamation those two members that were recommended by the Library Board by Commissioner Morgan? Is there a second? Commissioner Jordan with a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three is the Consolidated Health and Human Service Board Appointments. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Currently have multiple vacancies on the Health and Human Services Board, mainly because there's, a lot of them are designated professional positions, and a lot of times it's difficult to find those folks that are willing to serve from those designated professional positions, given how busy they are in their regular careers. Commissioner Jordan had requested, recommended that we take action to fill some of these seats. I may ask him to interject and speak further since he's a member of that board. And I know that, I think at least for TJ Smith, there was some consideration to appoint him to a vacant consumer seat on that board for a four-year term, expiring in July, essentially would be July 7th of 2023. That consumer, because that existing vacancy has expired, they have to be reappointed for a four-year term. Any of the initial terms for any of those professional seats could potentially be done for two years or less, but the consumer appointment needs to be for four years, given it's an expired term from an initial two-year term. And I may, I may defer to Commissioner Jordan, given this was his action item that he was seeking assistance with.
Thank you, County Manager Lucas. The HHS Board has had five vacancies, well, has had four vacancies since its inception in 2017. As the board designed to cover county health and the mental health, the physical health, I found it funny that none of the health professionals were filled out. We do have a dentist, we do have a few other slots, but a few of the core slots have never been filled. I won't go into why, I was a part of the board then, but considering it is a board of health, I think we need to have these seats filled. A general practitioner has come forward and is going to be talking to the board next month, so we may be able to fill that one. Tonight, the ones I would like to bring up are, as you mentioned, where Chief of Police, TJ Smith, for the consumer seat for a four-year term expiring in 2023, and Dr. Laura Harberson for the psychologist seat. And someone will have to correct me as to when that term would expire. I don't remember. I'll have my notes in front of me, but I think that has to be a four-year term. Is that right? No?
I think the way you had it enlisted in the agenda packet was to expire on November 7th of 2020, and I believe that's fine.
And that would make it, that would keep the numbers rolling off each year fairly even?
Correct.
Okay. That is my recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. I just have one question or comment for somebody to clarify. The consumer seats expired in November of 2019. So this would be, 2018, I'm sorry. So this, the TJ Smith seat would be filling an unexpired term for four years? Right, but the, when we made the initial, when we set this up initially, we set it on four-year rotations for specific users. So consumers were all in one group for four years. Then we started physicians, veterinarian, whatever else the other required positions are, got three years, so on and so forth. So this seat was initially a one-year. That expired November, but then when you reappoint, they go to four years, was my understanding. And we never reappointed that seat. The member that was in it just kept filling in until reappointment. So this TJ Smith would actually be filling that seat, which started in November of 2018. So my point is that the only difference is that should be November of 2022, not July 7th, 2023. Right. I think personally, to make it easier for future boards, if they keep rotating, else wise, we run into a situation that we're going to see later with the Board of Adjustments, where we start making one-year appointments to get it to where all 12 members aren't rolling off in the same year. My understanding, I pulled up the board, I believe, I think six expired. Right. And I've been going over to not only having that, I've been trying to have it laid out in each of those areas. And I'm very much worried it come off and you know, better not have it ran in. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Jordan, and I appreciate your work. In the interest of full disclosure to the board, the general statute says that these nominations have to come from the Board of Health. The Board of Health has not made this as a recommendation. I'm willing to support it tonight under, with the additional comment that there is no objection from the Board of Health in the future in August at their next meeting. If they don't make the objection in August for these two members, I'm moved forward. But the law says that it has to come as a recommendation from them, according to, am I correct in saying that, Jenny? So...
One thing I would say is the others that were appointed in November were November 5th, so if you want to keep them consistent, I would appoint these two to be November 5th of 2020 and November 5th of 2022.
You okay with that, Commissioner? No, that's the, that's the Laura Harberson. To clarify for those listening, because I know some folks had mics on, some folks had mics off, we were clarifying a few dates. Laura Harberson has been recommended for a position as a... Psychologist? Psychologist for a term that expires November 6th, 2021. And TJ Smith has been recommended for appointment to a consumer seat, which expires November 5th of 2022. That's the current recommendation. Are there, is there any other questions from the board? I'm going to assume Commissioner Jordan made that in the form of a motion. So moved. And is there a second? County Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I believe that Mrs. Harberson's term should actually expire in 2020. Is that correct?
Nope. None of the terms expire in 2020 right now. They're all 19, 21, and 22.
Okay, because the four, when we initially set up the Health and Human Services Board, the four vacant professional positions, it would be four years from establishment of the board. Would that be 2021 or 2022?
Yeah, 17. It was initially put 17. This was the first full year of it in 18.
Thank you.
Is there a second? A second from Commissioner Morgan. Is there any other discussion, questions, or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number four, Board of Adjustments Appointments. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm stepping in for Planning Director Bob Remesberg this evening. He's on vacation. The Board of Adjustment has two members who have served two terms, Buddy Clark and Michael Efferd. One member, Franklin Lee, is currently an alternate. He's eligible for reappointment. Jim Starnes is also an alternate who's eligible for reappointment. Terms expired June 30th of 2019. New appointments, two regular members and one alternate, would serve through June 30th of 2022. Michael Efferd was contacted following the June 10th meeting, is agreeable to serve as an additional term if desired. We request one alternate, Jim Starnes, is currently in the role and eligible to be appointed for a one-year term. So I'll read what Bob's note was. Appoint two regular members and one alternate member to the Stanley Board of Adjustment for terms expiring June 30th, 2022. Appoint one alternate member for a term expiring June 20th, 2020. Bill Franklin Lee is eligible for reappointment. Other applications include Kevin Brickman, former County Planning Board member, and Lane Peeler, member of the Meisenheimer Planning Board. Richard Cosgrove has also served on the planning board several years ago. Candace Bradington was appointed to the County Planning Board in January. We are recommending that Jim Starnes be reappointed for a one-year term. That will correct the rotational appointment of board members to three per year for this nine-member board. I'm unhappy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the County Manager?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a nomination.
Mr. Morgan.
I'd like to nominate Michael Efferd, Richard Cosgrove, and Billy Lee to remain in the alternate position, and then Jim Starnes with the alternate for the one-year term.
So Michael Efferd for a two-year appointment?
Mm-hmm.
What was your second one?
Richard Cosgrove.
I'm sorry. One of the two regular board members for a three-year term. And then your alternate was who?
Billy Lee, remaining his alternate, and then Jim Starnes for the one-year.
For the alternate one-year seat of Jim Starnes. Any other nominations?
Chairman.
Mr. Lawhan.
I'd like to nominate Shannon Maynard for a two-year term. And I would also like to nominate Franklin Lee. The alternate would be Richard Cosgrove.
So currently I have two nominations for each of the two regular member seats for a three-year term. Michael Efferd and Shannon Maynard, Richard Cosgrove and Billy Lee. I also have two nominations for the alternate position with Richard Cosgrove and Billy Lee. And then the one-year alternate position to balance out the board was Jim Starnes, the only nomination I have for that. Is that correct? Are there any other nominations?
Yes, sir. One-year swap-out. And I'm trying to nominate citizens that don't serve on boards currently. Lane Peeler.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lawhan, I didn't hear you.
Lane E. Peeler.
Lane Peeler, thank you. Sorry about that.
Meisenheimer, North Carolina.
All right. So there's two nominations for each seat this evening. Since some of the nominations are both for the regular member seats and the alternate seats, we'll handle each seat individually. The first one we'll do is the appointment of a regular member seat for a three-year term. This will be the nominations of Michael Efferd or Shannon Maynard. All those in favor of Shannon Maynard, please raise your hand. And that's, I recorded three votes. All those in favor of Michael Efferd, please raise your hand. I record four votes. The second three-year seat for a regular member is a nomination between Billy Lee and Richard Cosgrove. All of those in favor of Billy Lee, please raise your hand. I'll actually record myself as a yes to that as well. That's a three vote. Billy Lee for the regular seat. This is for the, this is for the regular member seat. That is, I'm recording six votes for Billy Lee. Any opposed, please raise your, or all those in favor of Richard Cosgrove, please raise your hand. I record one vote for Richard Cosgrove. So the alternate seat for the three-year term, since Billy Lee has a full-time seat or a full seat, would only leave Richard Cosgrove. All those in favor of Richard Cosgrove, please raise your hand. Record a vote of seven. The alternate seat for a one-year term is between Lane Peeler and Jim Starnes. All those in favor of Lane Peeler, please raise your hand. I record one vote. All those in favor of Jim Starnes, please raise your hand. Record six votes for Jim Starnes. So the two regular seats should be Michael Efferd and Billy Lee, Richard Cosgrove serving as a three-year alternate, and then Jim Starnes serving as a one-year alternate. Yes, sir.
Let's see what a conversation we had another time. Do we, do we currently have a regulation on a member not serving on more than two Boards? Jim Starnes is on two now, right?
What's he on?
Jim Starnes is currently an alternate on the Board of Adjustment and the Board of Equalization and Review. On the Board of Adjustment and the Board of Equalization and Review.
This is Board of Adjustments?
This should be the same Board, okay. I got you.
Jim Starnes will remain in the one-year alternate seat. Tyler, I wrote that down in case it's clear as mud. All right, item five tonight is the Centralina Region F Aging Advisory Committee Appointment. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attached, there's a letter from the Centralina Council of Governments concerning the county's appointment for an individual to serve on the Region F Aging Advisory Committee. We get all our, a lot of our senior Health and Human Services funding, especially through the Health and Human Services Block Grant. That Region F Advisory Committee meets and discusses those funds and the allocation of those. Mr. William Rigsby is the current delegate appointment to that Board. Mr. Rigsby is eligible for reappointment and willing to serve. Consider the appointment and reappointment of a delegate to serve on the Region F Advisory Committee as the action we're asking the Board to take. Looking to see the information's in your packet. This is, this has been historically a different, difficult one to, to appoint. And so all we have is Mr. Rigsby at this point in time who's willing to serve as another year's an alternate.
I know from other discussions, this Board is, this Board seat is very hard to fill. It meets in Charlotte. People have to drive there. And Stanley County is not heavily represented at the meeting. So if Mr. Rigsby is willing to fill that seat again, I vote we do it and thank him for, for offering. We need somebody on that Board.
All right, there's a motion from Commissioner Jordan. Is there a second? Commissioner Morgan, to reappoint Mr. Rigsby to the Aging F, Centralina Region F Aging Advisory Board. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. I want to take a quick moment to go back to item three, the Consolidated Health and Human.
Chairman, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Speak just a second on this Board that Mr. Rigsby's on. We do have two other folks from Stanley County, and we do appreciate them going to those meetings in Charlotte. And that is Dr. Zabernathy and Dr. Johnny Woodard. I'm glad they also go.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawhan. Item three, the County Attorney has gone back and reviewed some minutes. The seat, the Laura Harberson seat that was set to expire, I think we said 2021, was correctly stated as 2020 originally, because we left those four vacant seats open, according to the prior minutes.
Right, when we initially established the Board, the four vacant professional seats had a term of three years. When we staggered everything, so the initial term for those would expire in 2020, because that's the initial term for the professionals. So thereafter, it would be four years. So I think the term of Mrs. Harberson should actually expire in 2020 rather than 2021, based on the minutes.
Chairman, I don't have a problem with that either way. We have had a hard time finding a psychologist to get on that Board. I think if she's okay doing it, she'll be okay doing it to 2020, and then again for four more years, hopefully.
I think the intent is just to get our rights and our correct rotation down. County Manager?
The only thing I would say, if you do that, you're going to have one person hanging out there in 2020, the rest of them will be 2020, not, they'll either need to be reappointed in 19, 21, or 22. So I don't think, I don't think, I think the Board can.
Correct, unless we fill those other four seats.
Correct, that's true.
Yeah, so then they would still be in rotation. Optimistically, we would fill those seats. Yeah, okay.
I don't admit, I have no preference. I'm just trying to keep it consistent, so, I mean, but if you want to do 2020, that's fine.
Instead of a vote, can we do, just without objection? Is there any objection to changing that date from 2021 to 2020? Seen no objection, I'd like that changed in the minutes. And that takes us back to item number six. The Jury Commission Appointment. County Manager Lucas.
The term of the Jury Commission Appointment for Mr. William Efferd expired on June 30th to 2019. He's got a work-related conflict where he's not in town, where he's, he travels for work now, and it's more difficult for him to make meetings. And so the county's commissioners appoint one member of the three-member jury commission. The other members are appointed by the clerk of court and the senior resident Superior Court Judge. The commission meets at irregular times, two to three times a year, so that's why it's difficult unless, you know, you know exactly when they're going to meet for, it's been difficult for Mr. Efferd to make those meetings. So the appointments are for a three-year term. There are some applications in the packet for your review and consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Tate P. Daniels.
Yes, sir. All right, nomination of Tate Daniels. Is there any other nomination? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept Tate Daniels as the appointment? Motion from Commissioner Lawhan, I think? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number seven, the Centralina Economic Development District Appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The county typically appoints the EDC Director to serve on the Centralina Economic Development District Board that meets through the Centralina Council of Governments. Each term is for a period of three years. The CEDD meets monthly at the Centralina Council of Government offices in Charlotte, and I would ask the Board to consider the appointment of Ms. Candace Louder, excuse me, for Economic Development Director, as the Economic Development Director for the CEDD.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I made the motion, will you approve? Candace Louder.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, a second by Commissioner Jordan. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number eight, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference Voting Delegate. County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. You've got a letter or an email in your packet from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for their conference that will be held in August, the 22nd through the 24th. August the 24th, that Saturday is when the business meeting will be held from 2:00 to 4:00. And the county, it's recommended would appoint a voting delegate to attend that business meeting and be able to vote on behalf of Stanley County. Meeting's in Greensboro.
I guess we should start with who all is available that day. Planning to go. Commissioner Lawhan? Is there anybody else planning to go that day? In the interest of selecting a delegate. All right, so there is a motion to nominate Commissioner Lawhan as the voting delegate. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number nine is the North Carolina DOT Resolution of Support in conjunction with Project Blue Sky. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We were asked by North Carolina Department of Transportation to lend support to, they're seeking additional funding for road infrastructure for Project Blue Sky. And I think what's occurring is they're looking to find additional resources from other pots of money at the state level. And so they've asked us to consider a resolution in support of that request by the local Division 10 to the Board of Transportation at the state level. So I'd ask the Board's consideration of this resolution.
Any questions for the County Manager?
Is this in addition to the road work that's already to be done, or is this helping out on what's to be done?
This would help to accomplish what's already planned to be done. All the safety improvements associated with several of the roads that are adjacent to the site. So this would be, this is, they're seeking additional funding based on revised engineering estimates.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we consider and approve the attachment resolution of support.
Motion to approve the resolution by Commissioner Jordan, second, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Almond, I believe. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number 10 tonight is recognition of a few EMS employees, Mr. Mike Smith.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. Here to recognize Stanley County EMS medics, our employees. For recent award that we received, first for Stanley County. It's American Heart Association Mission Lifeline Recognition. Lifeline EMS recognition is a program designed to showcase EMS organizations across the nation for excellent STEMI, MI's care. Pre-hospital personnel, the first providers to care patients suffering from cardiac emergencies. A lot of this work goes in first from our ground crews and our medics for the, for the efforts that they put in. Why do we do it? Why do we put this in, this information out there and what's the care about? Lifeline connects EMS providers, referring hospitals, receiving centers in a coordinating system. The program assists EMS agencies in getting the feedback needed to understand how the system of care is working and provides evidence-based metrics to measure the system's performance. So a lot to do with our heartbeat celebration, a lot of the work that we have done, and it takes a lot of data to put this in there. These gentlemen, Mahami, Sergeant Lithgow, and Sergeant Chandler is a big part of that, pulling that data together and putting that in there for us. It's measured on four different measures, one with an option. The first one is simply the 12 lead acquisition, putting that heart monitor on them and quickly, and recognizing that STEMI. The second measure is percentage of hospital notifications or 12 lead EKG transmissions suggesting a STEMI alert. Basically, they get there, they do their full patient assessment, they get this 12 lead on, they recognize an AMI and transmit all this to the hospital in less than 10 minutes. Measure three, EMS FMC to PCI is less than 90 minutes. And/or EMS FMC to PCI is less than 120 minutes when transported, greater than 45 minutes, or door to balloon, which is going to the cardiac cath lab in less than 30 minutes. Measure four, arrival STEMI referring hospital in less than 30 minutes, or EMS to FMC to PCI the transfer patient in less than 120 minutes, which is pretty remarkable being in this rural area that we're in. The option is percentage of 12 lead EKGs performed within 10 minutes of the EMS FMC on patients with chest pain symptoms who are, you know, greater than 35 years of age. So we've narrowed that down. This is the first time we've done this and put this data together. These guys did a great job doing it. We went to the HAA for the seminar, we were awarded, first for this county, for the Mission Lifeline Bronze Award. So that's what we want to do, is we want to recognize our employees this evening, these two gentlemen here for keeping up with that data, putting it all in, and the first submission of ours. And that's the award that shows there. And that's it. Any questions?
Something I would like to add for the, this award, for all those measures, you have to be greater than 75% each quarter to get the Silver Award. We missed it by 1% in quarter three of last year from getting the Silver Award. So it was remarkable by our field staff.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Want a picture? I'll come down for a picture. It doesn't matter. Board, want to join them for a picture? Yeah, let's go.
Thank y'all for what you do.
Appreciate y'all.
You're the boss.
He's the boss.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda from Commissioner Morgan, is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Brings us to public comment. Does anybody would like to speak this evening? I didn't see a sign-up sheet. Okay. Anybody to speak? And, all right, we'll go to Board Comment. Commissioner Lawhan?
I had the privilege to attend Marah Mountain State Park dedication of some additional land and learn quite a few things there that I didn't know. Found out that Marah Mountain State Park was, became a state park in 1935. It's also the third state park that opened in North Carolina. And it's a beautiful place that I don't go too often enough. I took, I had the privilege of taking both my, two of my grandchildren, and they were well-behaved, and was joined by Commissioner Lane Farr and Commissioner Tommy Jordan, and Andy Lucas was there, and I appreciate their attendance. Gorgeous day, beautiful place, thankful for the land that's been given to Marah Mountain.
Mr. Jordan?
Oh, he, he, he said the good part. That was an awesome day. Marah Mountain and the wildlife people were very glad to have us. They commented that was, I think, the highest turnout they had, they'd had in a while, at least from us. And on another note, the, in regards to some of these Boards, there's a lot of Boards out there that still have openings. We are working, I have worked with County Manager Andy Lucas, trying to get a little bit of clarification on the Stanley County website about maybe what some of these positions are and what positions are opened up, to make it very simple for people to determine when things are available to join. But we've had some comments on social media that there's not a lot of, you know, advertising out there. There's not much that we can do as Commissioners or as County Government, except tell you that they're open. So we're doing that as, the only way we know how, on the website, on Facebook, here in these meetings. If you would like to serve Stanley County on one of its Boards, by all means, just call our County. If you would like to serve Stanley County on one of its boards, by all means, just call our county manager's office, or go online to stanleycountync.gov and fill out the application. It literally takes about 15 seconds to let us know that you're interested. And we would love to have some more names to pick from. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Barbie.
Congratulations to EMS, and thank you for showing up, it's a great accomplishment. Our school system, I think, kind of had a little bit of a holdback with the money. Governor didn't approve the budget, but anyway, I got some good notes about the school system there. We did have a 2A team, softball team, make the playoffs and won the 2A division. And I guess I'm speaking as a proud grandpa, because I had a granddaughter on that team. So, congratulations to the West Stanley softball team. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbie. Mr. Fur.
First off, I'd like to say about the Mar Mountain, we got the friends of Baden Lake that really, or Baden, that really worked hard and give refreshments that day. I want to thank them for that. And then also about the EMS, I'm so proud that we've got people that willing to do what they do for us, and I want to thank them all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fur. Commissioner Alman.
I'd like to echo what Commissioner Fur said, and everybody about EMS. You, some folks don't appreciate or know what all they do till they show up at your house. So, I appreciate what you guys are doing. I'd also like to mention, the Civil Air Patrol had an encampment at the Stanley County Airport, and it was really awesome. And a lot of good things going on at the airport.
Commissioner Morgan.
I'd just echo Commissioner's following statements. Thank all you EMS guys and gals for everything y'all do.
Thank you, just a couple of comments. Echo the congratulations to the EMS folks. I know you guys do way more than just that. But, that's what you're being singled out for tonight, so congratulations. And I know with the CARES program and all of that, I think you two kind of head that up as well. So, I really appreciate all that work and recognizing the folks in Stanley County that are helping, helping our citizens. On a different note, there's an event that I didn't know about in Oakboro. I saw it today. On their Parks, the Parks and Recreation page, it's, it's actually a little RC battle boats, but they're like World War II mock-ups of boats. So, you know, if you're, they're there all week during the day, and I think there's one evening this week that they're there at night. But I, I'm going to try and take my boys out there to see that, and I encourage everybody to attend it if, if you're available. But, without any other comment from the board, I'll request to recess the meeting until Thursday, July 11th at 5:30 PM. That's this Thursday. Motion to recess by Commissioner Morgan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Barbie. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you all for coming out this evening.